So I call this session to order and will you all please join me in the pledge to allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And changes to the agenda? Are there any changes?
No, not until we get to the consent agenda.
Okay, just the consent.
Yeah.
That's some additions there. That's fine. Okay, great. Public comments?
All right, so I will put up the public comment policy for everybody to see in person or remote. If you wish to make a public comment, just make sure you've read this. It's just the one page that's on here. And please, first name, last name, and town of residence before you make a public comment. If you are remote, you are free to make a public comment by using the hand raise feature, which is at the bottom of your screen. All right, I'm not seeing anybody at this time. We do have another public comment section at the bottom of the agenda, so.
Okay, great, thank you. And now we're up the superintendent's report.
So tonight's report, we'll start off with the biweekly, roughly anyway, biweekly COVID-19 data update, looking at the state, the region, our schools, followed by a little bit of a conversation around middle school mathematics and then a brief facilities update. I'm sure later on in the tonight's session, the facilities committee will have some further information that I won't touch upon here. So if we go to the third slide. There we go. We can see that the trend line looks very similar to what it has before. Certainly, the numbers are a little bit different. And the lower number, the one of cases, the seven day average, is continuing to creep up. It's now surpassed the high point that we had in that kind of late springtime. Hasn't quite gotten to the point where it was in that November, December, January timeframe that we had. The state as a whole is still in the red, and that has to do with cases per 100,000. This next area shows on your left, shows the new cases in the last 14 days. And you see that there are 11 in Jaffrey and 19 in Ridge. And then those numbers in parentheses are the actual active cases currently within town that have been reported to New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. Some of those individuals on that screen in Jaffrey and Ridge both. Some of the numbers are individuals who are in our school population. Certainly, there are others who are quarantining that are in our school population that have family illnesses that are going on right now. That is really the main reason why quarantine is going on nowadays. This year is family connections. Vaccination percentages did go up a couple points here, 44.7% vaccinated in Jaffrey and 35% in Ridge. It was 33.7, I think, percent in Ridge before and a 42 and some change in Jaffrey before. I will say that if you look at the site, the state site, they, these are people who are fully vaccinated, but they also have some numbers in the region for people who have received just one dose. So maybe they're in the process of doing that, and each of those numbers would be up a couple notches as well. So there is more movement happening right now. It's hard to look at 35% and say fantastic or 44.7% and say fantastic when the state average is closer to 60%. But going in the right direction, I think that way. And I think that, you know, there have been cases where specifically people in their twenties and up have had some pretty serious illness and that the people who, even though we can still have breakthrough cases, those of us who have been vaccinated, the symptoms and the ramifications seem to be mild in comparison, which is what the vaccines were designed to do. So it's good that they're doing what they were designed to do. This next one shows the school level information below in that picture, the snapshot of what is changed every single day. Although today, we did not get some of the numbers from our elementary schools, so we didn't change it for today. But this was Friday. You could see that we've been as high as 5% at the high school. RMS has been the lowest, although I talked to the nurse today and that they had sent several learners home. And so I don't have those numbers. That number might be higher. And JGS has been consistently in that kind of six to nine range for some time. So they are getting closer to 10%. Above, you'll see that there have been, this is total now, three cases in the middle school, high school building so far this year. That doesn't mean that we've just had three cases of students. We know of students who have been COVID positive, at least one, but they weren't ever in this facility. So they didn't start school necessarily, or they were elsewhere on vacation or something during a period of time when this, when they were positive. Two cases in Jaffrey grade school, same thing with that number one. There's probably another one or so. And then today, actually, we had our first in Ridge. So that email went out at six o'clock today to let them know the three new cases that we had over the weekend and today. So there were two that I had been contacted over the weekend about, and then one today from Ridge about two hours ago. So I will say, from the illness level, we certainly, as people have been getting tested, depends on where people get tested. But when they go get tested, sometimes they'll test for the flu and for strep and other things. Most of the people who have gone tested have been COVID negative. We have seen a fair amount of flu. Flu B was the first thing that came out. I haven't heard of strep yet. We have had instances of hand, foot, and mouth disease in some of our schools, and there have been a variety of other illnesses. So this is the season. And we're to keep on moving forward that way. It's been interesting to have more information about all illness. I will end this slide by saying, I don't know how many people we have out there. I'll be sending communication out later on this week to this end. Please, parents, do not send your learner to school who is having symptoms and covering them up with ibuprofen, Tylenol, things of that nature. We did have, in talking to our schools today, there were several cases in different places where learners had indicated that they had, they were feeling fine for a period of time because they were medicated in the morning and then came into school. Not necessarily cases where they had fevers, headaches, stomach, things of that nature. So they end up going home, being sent home, but we would prefer that those individuals not be sent in because even though they might feel well for two to three, maybe four hours, if you're fortunate that way, they are spreading possibly illness to other people. That is why we have a matrix that talks about all of illness, because that type of behavior is not helpful to anyone at this point in time. Current level is in that yellow space where masking is recommended, required indoors when social distancing is not able to take place. We have a few places that we probably need to tighten up in that area. I also have had some phone calls from a couple parents talking about some situations with buses. I have spent a couple days in the evenings and in the morning in one location to take a look at the scenarios at the different schools. And so I will be contacting the bus company with some of that data to share so that we can continue to be on the same page. Next Monday, probably the best thing in the entire world, a math information night. I love math, so it's right up my alley, but we are going to, we have made quite a few changes within middle school mathematics. For quite some time, this has been an area where I think the community has felt we were weak in. Our data says that this was an area of relative weakness. And our math team over at the, well, really the middle school and the high school, because they do collaborate a lot more together now. I would say middle school with the support of the high school. But the middle school teachers in particular, they're really to be commended. They had met several times this summer to do a lot of planning to put very specific protocols in place and actions or activities in place that they were all going to hold each other accountable to sticking to. That started with changing up several of the curriculum documents and what the expectations were. And then they are all using the Chromebooks with the Engage New York curriculum, which is similar in concept to the Eureka programming that they were using. It's all, it's all the same. It's just one is free. And you have much more access to a lot of digital supports when you use the Chromebook. We also got Kami in their Kami software. It's a very inexpensive software that we were able to have all of our mass learners get a license for. That allows them to actually be able to do several things on the computer itself to put answers into different places in a nice way. Some of that is one, because you need to not have to keep on going back and forth this way, although we do obviously still do paper pencil work. But they are assessed on their machines using a similar program to Kami. And being able to perform that just as a skill is important, and we didn't want that to be a barrier to them doing well and showing their knowledge in the area of mathematics. Now showing their knowledge in the area of mathematics, we have talked for now four years maybe, about the fact that wow, I got my child's New Hampshire SAS results, and it showed that he or she was developing or below average or whatever the, the name is for that. Yet they are getting an A or a B plus or something like that in school. And we've had several parents say, you know, while we appreciate our kids being on the honor roll, that's nice. We want to make sure that indeed their grade matches what they are, what their understanding is. And so as an F, we realized that that's important to do. And so the middle school math team is the first group in the district to do what I'm about to say. They're going to be using a one, two, three, four grading system. Now that is in our policies to allow for this. We have not done it widespread because there's a lot of readiness that has to be there. They just happen to be a small enough group and a very focused group to be able to do this. Their goal being that 80% of the grades as they go through the end of the year, the summit of result will will correspond with the marks they get within the state assessment as well. Getting 100% would be tough. Obviously, you want to work toward that, but we figured that was a reasonably high goal, actually, but doable to look to go for 80% this time around. Certainly, the end result is that we want our learners to think more deeply. We want them to understand the math content at a better level so that they're more prepared for later on, especially at the high school and then beyond. And, and so we'll be giving our learners, I think, with this process and with the descriptions that we have of what all these areas mean. We have very good descriptors with examples and so forth of what it means to be at a two knowledge level in a specific area. It's not bad that you want to be there. Matter of fact, most of us would want to be there. But through the course of the year, you want that to go up and be able to demonstrate and provide evidence that you are understanding the mathematics at a higher level, at least at a proficient level, which we've called the number three. So we're doing all that work, and we will need to let parents know about that. It is very possible that when you go and make a change like this, and especially because I know that their expectations are going to be very high. If it has not mimicked what they have had previously before coming into middle school or even for seventh and eighth graders previously, what they've had while in middle school, there could be some differences that you would see in the reporting, you know, oh, my child has got an A before, why are they suddenly getting a two? Which I suppose we're not, you know, it would be around a C or something to that effect. Our goal is for them to learn and to be accurate with how we give our feedback so that they do end up getting that B or that A. But that when we give them that grade in the sense that three or that four, it's not giving it to them. They have burned it, and we understand that we have the evidence that they have been able to have that level of understanding. So that's what that night is all about. You're certainly welcome to attend. It's going to be on Zoom. We'll also have it live in the Pratt Auditorium.
When is that?
September 27th at 7:00 PM. In person, it will be at the Pratt Auditorium, but we also want to, I believe you're going to be there or helping out with that.
Yeah, so I'll be setting it up pretty similar to how we've been running the school board meetings in the past couple meetings, where we have an ability to run both a physical presence and an online presence, that there could be feedback. It'll be recorded, just like a school board meeting, and we can put it up online so that those who miss it still have an ability to see the information.
Yeah, we want to make sure that everyone has access, and so we're very pleased to be able to do it in both ways. Certainly, those people who are going to learn better or get their answers, you know, get their questions answered live, you know, will probably be better for some of those people. And then lastly, I have just a few bullet points of a facilities update. Our parking lots, they're nearly complete. There are, right now, John is working on creating a punch list for all areas. Some of it having to do with the soil around the parking lots themselves, but, but they're looking nice. I think the traffic flows are good. It's been pretty safe. We certainly, RMS, RMS actually, now that the grass is growing, I think it's really sharp. But, you know, we had a few, you know, difficult times with the buses and the cars going into the same place where they weren't supposed to. So it's a bit of retraining. That's to be expected. And, but there's certainly enough space for people, which is, which is great. Today, actually, I went over there for a meeting in the afternoon. I went at the wrong time. Parents were coming in to pick up their learners. There was no way I was going to get a parking space in that main spot next to the school. And I simply just went right around, parked up top and walked in, and so it was very convenient that way. Here, something you might not know about the parking lot is that the spaces where the students park and some of the staff as well, that's right outside these doors. We, even though they're not slanted, slanted is, you know, the original thought we had because of safety and so forth. Those spaces were made wider, so they're 10 feet in width as opposed to the nine feet typically is what they would put in there. We certainly got some nice increased spacing with all the angled parking that we have as you come into school. And I think it is a lot safer than what it was, which is good. So lots of work this past summer to make that happen, but I think that everyone did a great job, including the school board who was there every step of the way and giving us authority to do certain fixes that occur as we went along. Our contract for HVAC with EEI, it's ready to be signed. It's on my desk. I haven't finished. I haven't signed it yet because I have a couple more questions that I want answered. But in general, what I've read looks good so far. The contract is for $2,839,510. The plan is to use federal funds for this, the SRS two and three funds, not all of the SRS three funds. Some of that has to be set aside for other purposes, but this right here, we're very fortunate. I think what I would say is that we're very fortunate. A lot of schools have wanted to use these funds for the purpose of what we're proposing using these funds for. Getting a company to work and do this in your school district right now is next to impossible. There aren't the number of teams out there, number of companies that are doing this. Well, I should say, the companies are doing it. They're having no problem finding the business because everyone wants to get this done. I would say that as we go through and do the work here, that involves really redoing the RMS and the JGS HVAC work. Anything, any of our units that are like three years old, we do have some three-year-old units. So then we're talking the end-of-life ones, the older ones. Those are all going away. Those will be replaced. Anything that's new, they'll be, there'll be pieces added on to them to do the dehumidification. We're not going to actually get rid of good material that we have. That would be much more expensive and foolish. That's mostly RMS. We certainly are having to do a quite an upgrade to the electrical capacity at RMS. And then JRMS, there's a little bit of work that is to be done, just a couple of things, one rooftop unit and dehumidification as well as improving our heating through that portion of the building, that front portion of the building, utilizing our wood pellet burner much better. It's, that will save us money in the long run and will actually heat more evenly, which is, which is what they expect it to happen. That's what they are saying should happen. So we were able to tag this on to, because the board had made, had along with the community, a community group had looked at an energy audit years ago, and I'd had EEI come in two or three years ago and do work as a performance bond. We were able to tack on to this, and we'll have conversations later on. We have, we can have the opportunity to keep them here doing more of the work this coming summer if we plan ahead really well. I've had those conversations. We'll need to talk about these things at budget season. But there's a lot of needed work that this school district needs for their buildings and facilities. And some of that work, if we don't get it done sooner, is going to take years to be able to have the opportunity to do it again. So there might be an opportunity that our district has that a lot of places won't have, and we'll talk about those opportunities. But I'm glad that we're able to, at no, no increase to the taxes here locally, be able to take tariffs, school, two schools this way in the tune of about $3 million. That's a lot of, it's a lot of work. I will say, there is going to be some invasive work during this timeframe because we're going to be working all the way through the course of the year with an end date of hopefully May for the, at least the elementary pieces, which will mean displacing classes. I think JGS has a good plan for theirs already, and they have the space to be able to do it. RMS, I think we still have some work to do. There's a possibility we'll have to rent, it would be part of the project. You know, cost, rent a portable for a period of time to make sure that people have, the classes have what they need. And then I spoke, yeah, number three is just the current work. I mean, the currently, the work that we're exploring in case we want to do some more work this coming summer, getting it all planned, doors, making sure everything's AD accessible, bathrooms, our conversation, we've been talking about with the facilities improvement committee, which we'll meet again at the end of this week. Modernizing fixtures, creating bathrooms that respect the privacy of all learners across this entire district. So that's it for my update today. From the kind of the technical side of things, the only thing I would add is that this past weekend, we had homecoming here. I was unable to be present Saturday because I was in classes all day myself. But I was getting texts during the entire day about really good things that were happening. I heard our boys ended up winning their soccer game against, was it Messina or Fall Mountain? It was Messina, and I think the girls played a good game against one of the teams, I think it was Fall Mountain. And then also the field hockey, I think, did end up losing to Messina. But all in all, I think more importantly, I was informed that there were a lot of people there. There were a lot of our teachers there, and it was a beautiful day. So that's, that's a really great thing. I think Nick will share some data later on. It's pretty cool. The other data I just got prior to our non-public session today was Heather Lindstedt informed me that they have right now, this fall, about 350 learners signed up for athletics or clubs. And that keeps on growing. And so there are other ones who are doing clubs, but maybe aren't signed up completely yet. But that's half your population, which is really good. If we can get up to that 60% mark, that would be fantastic. That would be super fantastic. So good participation. Volleyball's growing already. More people want to play, so that's good.
All right, are there any questions for Ruben?
Yes. Just a couple of items. You know, I'm sorry, this is really more comment perhaps than a question, but I think the math night is really exciting. I know that from the time you first arrived here and got us all thinking about a strategic redesign, we were talking about trying to move our learners forward and increase the educational capacity of all of our learners. And while math is only one piece of it, it's an extremely important piece. And so to know that our math group in the middle school, and I think, Ruben, you've told us that the middle school is really the key for math in many ways. So that, that team there is putting together this kind of an effort is exciting.
Yeah, absolutely. I can't, I can't say that they are not without some hesitation. This is, there's a lot of new things that's going on. I've been able to visit them a couple of times, some of the rooms a couple of times, and certainly all of them once so far, and really had some good dialogue and to see what's happening within the classes. And so I'm very impressed. There's a lot of work that they've committed to doing, and I'm excited for them, not, you know, not just these middle school math teachers. I think that's permeating through the middle school in general, and certainly I know in conversations with sixth grade teachers, it's translating over to English language arts and just in, just the culture of higher expectations, I think, is, is starting to come into, into play. And people who are willing to take some risk. I mean, it's helpful to have the superintendent backing you on this one, so it's a little bit less risky, I guess you could say, because I'll be out there as well to help out with this, this presentation. So, but nonetheless, it's, it's not easy what they're, what they're doing.
And if I may, but I would also like to just add that what you told us about the facilities work, I know you've been working with EEI for months now to get a contract going, and in the same process, negotiating over how we can incorporate EEI to further upgrades of our bathrooms and our HVAC in this building. They warned us four or five months ago that it was going to be hard to get contractors for next summer. And now we're seeing that they were right. So that's really impressive. And to see the work that was already started around here is, is kind of gratifying too. The improvements to the parking lots, both in Ridge and here in Jaffrey, there's a lot more work to be done, but oh, and something you didn't mention, but how you're very aware of this. These buildings are very old, and we've had a number of infrastructure breakdowns over the past month or so, and our teams have really been put into a lot of stress to try and keep on top of them and repair them, and they've done a great job, so.
Yeah, I'm very proud of all our, all of our team, our workers, our custodians, the maintenance staff has been second to none. The, the constant change that they had to deal with during the summertime when, you know, they have kind of an idea of where they want to go and what they need to do to get things ready and still be able to take care of everything was pretty, pretty amazing, to be quite honest. And still be able to take care of everything was pretty, pretty amazing to be quite honest.
Right. Thanks, John, for your comments and thanks again, Ruben, for your report. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda and we have some changes or additions.
Yes. I'd like to add the nomination of Elizabeth Hendrickson, JGS Instructional Associate, effective October 4th, 2021. Then also add the resignation of Lara Hilton, Student Services Secretary, effective October 1st, 2021.
Okay. Um. Any other changes or are we good for a motion? Oh, well, we have to have that as a motion, sorry. Alicia, can you put that in, in terms of an emotion, a motion, those additions so that we can then vote those in?
Yes. Okay, so I make a motion to add the nomination. Thank you. Do you, do you need me to keep saying it or?
Ask Nick if he's got it. I think he's got it.
You got that, Nick?
Yeah, I'm all good. I got it.
Okay, thank you. And we need someone who can second that.
Second.
Is that Patty?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. And since I'm remote, we have to do this roll call. So Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you. We have Lisa.
Hi.
Thank you, Christine.
Hi.
Thank you. Charlie.
Hi.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Thank you. And I say I so we have this addition now or that, sorry, does anyone abstain, is anyone opposed? Since we all said yes, they aren't, so that change goes on. As 700 and now we can have the motion for the consent agenda, please.
Can I, excuse me, but my apologies, but I also need to ask that the minutes for August 27th be pulled out.
Thank you. I also need that to happen.
Okay. Okay, so.
So I'll move that those minutes be taken out of the consent agenda.
I'll second John's motion.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm going to do a roll call vote again. Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yes.
Thank you, Christine.
Yes.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, John.
And I.
I say I. Anyone opposed, any abstain that carries 700? Thank you very much. Now we are ready for a motion for the consent agenda.
I'm over we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second Lisa.
Lisa, thank you. And let's go in the opposite direction now, John.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Thank you, Christine.
Hi.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hi.
Thank you, Alicia.
Yes.
Thank you, Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, I say I. Pose abstain, it carries 700. All right. Now we need to do a motion for August 27th.
So I'll move that the minutes for August 27th be approved.
Can you make that motion, John?
You can.
Maybe not.
You and I can.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 22nd.
Okay, thank you, Patty. And a second.
I'll second Lisa.
All right, thank you, Lisa. And Patty.
Hi.
Thank you, Alicia.
I abstain.
Thank you.
There.
Yes. Okay, Lisa.
Hi.
Thank you, Christine.
Hi.
Thank you, Charlie.
Hi.
Thank you, John.
Abstain.
Thank you, I say I, so it carries 502. Thank you, everyone. Um, and now we're up to our presentation of our new website and the app.
All right. So I'm just going to take off screen share real quick for a second. There's just a few quick things I want to make sure I have up. Just to make sure I have everything all ready to go. But yeah, so while I'm talk, while I'm kind of pulling all this stuff up. What I will say is that we went live with our new website on the first day of school, which was exciting. We made that decision just because, you know, new school, new website, you know, just having that nice clean kind of start to the school year. So it was nice to be able to kind of transition. We were anticipating that it could be down from anywhere from one hour to as much as 72 hours, we were told. It was down for maybe 20 minutes and then we were just back up and fine. We haven't had any major issues that I've at least been alerted to yet. So that's also great. We have had a couple of minor things, like certain links being translated over from the old website to the new website being routed through Squarespace somehow. So we were getting a signal where like it was just a blank page because our Squarespace site is no longer live. So that ended up, we, I just had to go and clean up the links, so that was an easy fix. We had a couple of things that we added and changed around a little bit. You know, minor stuff on like HR pages, just to make sure that we had everything, you know, as it needed to be. Just pulling up one more thing and then we'll be able to share screens. All right. Up here. All right, so from here on out, I'm just going to kind of share a few things. So everybody should be able to see the new website. I don't know, I would assume that everybody's at least been able to kind of go on the landing page at this point, but. So we ultimately decided on a template that we could translate over to actually four websites now. So it's not just one website. One of the big issues with our old website was that everything was run off sau47.org. So when you were going into a a school page, it wasn't actually like its own entity, it was a singular page. So that's why you notice there was all this important information that was just kind of stuffed to the bottom and buttons because we couldn't actually put it anywhere else. But now the school district website, sau47.org has information that's pertinent to the entire district. And then if you go to a school website, which if you look at the up top for the URL, it's, we just add in the school code, so it's jgs.sau47.org, it's jrmchs.47.org and it's RMS.47.sau47.org. You don't, you don't put the WWW, you just, you know, do what's up on the, you know, screen right now. So as you can see, this is Jeffrey Grade School's new website. It looks exactly the same template wise, format wise. But now we're able to bring in logos, colors, things like that. And then also a delineation of, as you could see up here, obviously we have home COVID resources, we have news. But then you get into like school board departments, things for staff, just important links in general. And when you go to that school page, it changes and that didn't happen before. That's a big new feature. So obviously, again, you have the resources because that's important to everybody. The news here is now just JGS news. So if you want to get, you know, district news, et cetera, that's, or you want to go to get stuff for RMS, you go to that individual page. Now you have a page for parents and students that has, you know, information on clubs, activities, you know, calendars and all this stuff is just specific to JGS. So if I go to the annual, not the annual calendar, but if I go to the live calendar, you're going to scroll down and eventually it's going to go live. So as you can see, any, this kind of maroonie color that represents our district is going to pop up for anything that's all schools, as you can see, fire drill, parents group meeting, picture day, these are all just specific. All this is actually routed to the website via Google. So we have, all of our secretaries are able to put information into a Google calendar and then it just feeds to the website. So now we not only have on the district website, a nice color coded calendar for everybody. But if you want to get something specific to your school, go to your school and you can have that just broken down there. And then again, you have like about us and just all these other things that really just speak to the school. Another thing, if you notice up on the top left hand corner right here, we do officially now have a logo for Jeffrey Grade School. So now every school officially has a logo. That was a, another step, we worked with Bulldog and Keen to make that happen. And then as you can see, if you go to say RMS, colors are going to change, you're going to get the new logo, new picture. Calendars right here again are going to be, it's going to show you your three most recent events, it'll show you district, any sort of holidays and then anything specific to your actual school. So I'll go back to the, and as you can see, I'm navigating, rather than typing in the individual websites, I'm actually just going up to here and you have a select school option. You push that down, it gives you all of the schools. I am going to work on making, you know, not the elementary schools not capitalized. So like there are still a small few minor things like that that we'd have to work out. You know, up here we have our Facebook page, our YouTube page, your address. Right here, we have our quick links. So anything that's on the website like this, the format exists as it is, but we have the ability to change the content. So right now on the main page, we just have, you know, register students really prominent because that's a big initiative that we've overtaken is doing this online registration. So you click to that. It brings you to the information as to how you go about registering your student, you know, it gives you all the links for the process for our authorizations and forms, it gives you paper forms if that's something you need. You know, if you go to the other pages, again, it looks a little different menus for the schools, an SAU directory. Registering a student again is still there, everything's alphabetical, just so that you can try to find it a little bit more easier. Before we had kind of a mix of alphabetical and importance. And I feel like importance is kind of arbitrary because what may be important to me may not be important to somebody else. So I felt like going, you know, just alphabetical makes it easy. You scroll down to any page further, you get the recent news. So again, that kind of replicates what we had on the old website, but it just gives you that ability to click into something and be able to, you know, see whatever the email is that was sent out. And obviously, if you guys, if the board has any questions as we're going through, if there's anything you want to look at specifically, just let me know. I'm kind of just running you through quick hit stuff on the website. Again, we have our COVID-19 resources, so you get your, your mitigation strategies ma- matrix. This gives you the, you know, breakdown of the matrix and then we actually have the live matrix down bottom. Another thing that's really great about this website that wasn't as solid on the other website is it's completely mobile responsive. So if I restore, if I bring this down. I don't know if that's, yeah, there we go. So this more replicates kind of the size that you're going to see on a cell phone. I mean, obviously it's not exactly the same, but this is what's going to show up on your phone. So as you can see, everything just kind of shrinks down and kind of goes in a line. And then you just get your more options menu up top, you can still get that select the school option. Obviously, if you're on your phone, you're going to be pushing all this with a finger. You hit the little hamburger menu and you have all your same dropdowns and then you just click the plus button if you want to, you know, open them up and see information. So you know, you have the ability to break down into menus. And I think that's something that's important to note too, is before we didn't have the option to do these additional layers in our menu system. It was only you had, you created your menu up top, you had one option, you couldn't go any further. So we had a lot of issues kind of putting things in the right place or putting things in a way that made sense because you weren't able to really build things out in a way that made sense. Like here I can break out the live calendar from the annual calendar. So if you just want to see the static paper form calendars, like school district, you know, the school board calendar, they're all just right here. Yes, to speak specifically to the board, you know, we still have the school board tab with a bunch of things. You know, we've broken down by year rather than just having the little Google sheets, you know, stacked on top of each other. You can go into individual years. You go into our most recent year and we've been able to add this video lane. So now if you're looking at, you know, oh, I didn't make the July or the July 12th meeting. I have the agenda, I have the minutes and I have the video, you click it. And it brings you right to our YouTube page. And then you can watch the video right there. So it's just that additional layer of kind of access to be able to show everybody. Then you have all the meetings that we have planned throughout the year. Again, you have our meeting calendar, eventually when we develop our budget calendar, we can pop that in there as well. Committees still need to work on a little bit, we still need to get better about making sure that we have all the information, you know, out there and available. I've built it out so that we have it, but I do have a lot of these minutes. It's just again, me having the time to put them up. You know, and then we have our depart, so then to move on, we have departments broken down, you know, all the business information, facilities, human resources. A big effort was taken, not necessarily to really retool things so much right now. It was kind of to look at what we already had on the website and try to place it in an appropriate location. So down the line. So right now, I guess to back up even one more step, so right now I am doing everything on the website. I'm the only person that has access and the only person that can make changes. Before we had a list of, you know, maybe 20 to 30 people. And when you gave somebody access on Squarespace, they kind of had access to whatever, there wasn't as much control. So somebody could have gone in and deleted half of our website and it's just gone. Under this new system, I'm able to start working with staff members, you know, just now that we're kind of getting into the swing of the school year, I can work on this and say, human resources, for example, I can start working with our HR manager. We can give her access to just these specific pages, so she only has control over things that she should have control over. And then she has the ability to make changes, I'll get an email notification, I can look at it, make sure it adheres to our style guide. And then I can say yes, publish it, or I can give notes saying, hey, can we please make these few changes and then go back? So I at least over, it, it will eventually be to the point where I'm overseeing things, but we'll give more people control to be able to like update information as they see fit. So then we don't have a log jam of, you know, 12 different departments reaching out, like I need this here, I need that there, I need this additional thing. They can just make the changes and then I can just approve them. We're making more efforts to in these calendar postings, putting actual appropriate information in them. So if you notice, we get the date and time here, we also get more information to be found here for the spirit week schedule. So rather than just saying we're having spirit week this year, you actually have a link that you can go to to say, okay, here are the events for the middle school and the high school. Like here are the days, here's all the stuff, we have a pep rally. So we're trying to be more comprehensive and showing people that they can follow a channel rather than I have to look at this thing here and that thing over there and this places and this piece of information is in 17 different locations. So that's kind of, I guess, a really broad sense overview. I will say that one thing that I have had at least a few conversations about, or at least a few people reach out is this login option. The only people that it's going to bring you to a username and a password login, nobody needs to do that, that's purely for administrative tasks. And down the line, one thing that we can do is we can actually set up like an internet page for staff so that we can actually, you know, hide some things from the general public that are very like staff specific. And rather than just relying on email, we can start building out certain channels on the website so that they can just log into the website and then they can view those things there. So just giving that additional layer to like staff communication that we don't currently have. So that's something that we are working on, there's a lot of features on the website that we're in kind of a phase two, because we're, we're still in this process of making sure that all of our information is where it needs to be. In the backend, when it comes to students, families, staff, et cetera. In a minute, I'll be telling you more information about the staff or at least the family data. In terms of the staff data, we just have to really figure out where's the best place to put it, where it communicates with everything that we need to. So we're hoping to have that within the next couple of months or so. That'll help us have a more, for example, a more interactive directory. Because right now we just kind of have on this website, a version of our old one where it's just kind of the name, the job title, the work site and the email. We'll be able to build those out a little bit more. So I did, I guess, before I move on to the next thing, does anybody have any website questions? Patty?
I mean, I think it's incredible and I really applaud all of the efforts to get to this place. And it is far more user friendly and navigatable. I will say, I took me a long time to find the schools on the mobile version. And I wonder if you can change the change the more options to something that, you know, find a school slash more options. It just the little iconic thing didn't tell me, you know, I had to search for it, but I, and I don't know that everyone would have the patience, but I love. I mean, just getting into the depths of like the guidance counselor for JGS, her page is amazing, her resources are amazing and I, I really student focused and I really appreciate the layers. This isn't just a, this isn't a one dimensional piece of paper that's got some pretty pictures on it. I really think this is a real service to the community to give them what they need in an easy, fine fashion. So there are a lot of details with this and I congratulate you on your project because it's really a success.
Well, and I will say that, for example, we can go to that page real quick. Some of the pages like that are just links out to Google sites. So some of these things are resources that we've had and that have already existed. You know, this isn't anything that I developed. This is something that, you know, our school counselor developed at JGS, but now it's in a better location so that people can actually access it and see it. So like we have the ability to have people build out these Google sites and actually be able to have this kind of, as you said, layered, like almost customer service oriented, like this is what families want to see. But now we can at least display it in a way that's going to be easily findable to the average family rather than again, just kind of put at the very bottom of a page that they have to scroll all the way down to and know that it's there. So we'll, we'll work more with staff members. Eventually, we might even be able to work in like Google classrooms and things like that into like the staff directory. That is an option that we're able to explore. So you know, each teacher would be able to just link their information into their directory block so that then you just have that again, additional way of being able to find something easier.
The upcoming events right on the SAU website as well as each individual school is really lovely as well. I was, I'm wondering maybe if a bit more detail might behoove us to include, you know, picture day is tomorrow for RMS, but if you click on the detailed calendar, the picture day for JGS is next week. So that could cause some parents a little bit of shock like, oh shoot, they log onto the district website, picture day is tomorrow, but it's actually not. In the so maybe just detail in, in recording the events, but the it's not loading right now.
Yeah. So you're, you're bringing up this right here where it's just kind of saying picture day, but it doesn't have the school.
It doesn't apply to all of the schools. Like it's not a district wide picture day.
So part, part of that's just having to work with the secretarial staff to make sure that, like I've been working with some people and some people have caught on a little quicker than others, but trying to make sure that they build it out in a way that translates.
Right to how it's visualized. Yeah, for sure. No, but just having that is so helpful. And then I love when you click on that calendar, all of the schools are color coded. That makes it so much easier to find information that's relevant to children in different schools. So it's, it's really fabulous. Yeah.
Well, and that's kind of the, that was a big goal of mine was to really start focusing on school colors and color coding. Cause I think that you're gonna start seeing more identity in the colors and be, you know, you can see up here and obviously like up here, this says JGS fire drill, but like blue on the website as the primary color is gonna represent JGS and your red's gonna be RMS and your orange is gonna be the middle high school. And we have again, the, the like maruni color for the district and it's just being able to create those quick associations so that you don't have to have, you know, on the last one, we had this big explainer where it's like green is this school and purple is that school and the colors didn't match, so it didn't really mean anything.
Yeah, no, that was very easy to understand just quickly and be able to locate the information that was most relevant to me or that I was looking for. So and that I know from my participation in the communications committee was really huge to a lot of families and other stakeholders. So thank you for, for your work with that especially.
And to speak to Patty's point that she had made about this, you know, select the school becoming more options, that's something I can explore. One thing is, is that we are working off of templates. So some things I have the ability to change, other things I don't. One of the things that I'm trying to do is make note of some of these things that are a little bit more difficult because we're moving over to a new system so that we can have like resources to say like, here's, you know, when you're in your mobile version, here's kind of how it operates and here's kind of just a quick hits, like maybe a couple pages of how how it differs from the main website. So even if we can't make the changes, at least having the information available, just, I mean, we, part of it's just training, I mean, and going on to a lot of our Facebook postings and saying like, okay, our next issue of the JGS notes is available. Here's a link to show you where it is on the website. So training people to go to the website instead of having it like almost working separate so that you can route people there. It's like, okay, this is where it lives. I can find it here. So that's a goal to make sure that obviously people can use the thing that we just invested time and money into creating.
And there may be a widget that you can just have pop up looking for a school, you know what I mean? Just for a couple of months until people get used to it and and then watching the analytics to see how many people log on, on a desktop versus their mobile. If it's all trending towards mobile, then we have to make it
Yeah.
obvious. I think, but I, again, I can't, I know this how big of an undertaking this is. I really hope families give you feedback. That's, you know, it's important to know what they're looking for, what they want.
And there will probably be a survey eventually, once we've had a chance to kind of have it out there for a bit, say what's working, what is and what would you like to see more of? So one thing I did wanna go over real quick was the student registration, because that's kind of a huge prominent featured thing on the website and it's also just related to communication. So obviously we, we built out this infrastructure prior to the website and you know, obviously we're just kind of translating it here, but um we're working on online registration for all of our learners. This is so that we can get more updated information quicker. And that we can make sure that it's accurate so that if we have to communicate out to people, we know that we have their right email, their phone number, we have all their preferences, we have all the information about their students. Obviously you can go, there's any number of locations. The most easy one is if you go to this quick like quick link section, you have a tab there. But if you go to our web to school portal. Yeah. So one of the, you'll notice here, we have this new registration button for new student registration. But obviously this only applies to a new student, but the actual appearance of it looks pretty similar if you're somebody who's returning. So new start, new students or new families are gonna get this letter, which just gives you information about, you know, how it works. And then you're gonna go to add new student registration. And now instead of having a handful of forms, you know, fifteen, twenty forms, we've brought everything into this online signup. So now you have the ability to just type all this information and, you know, your robocalls, your guardian one and your guardian two. Mailing addresses, contact information. Eventually, you know, you have more opportunities to put information in for each student. You know, you have this add student, so you can put multiple students in and attach it to your account. Put the information in, you know, all these different things to build out that are on all these forms that we've asked. Emergency contact, all these authorizations, which deal with Chromebook sign outs, you know, reading the district's acceptable use policy. Remote learning recording, et cetera. And you have a, just, you know, choose yes or no. We have the links here to the authorization. So instead of clogging up this form, you can just go here. And you can actually just read them here on the website. And then also the same thing with the forums. All these forums that we've put on the website, we've broken them down into whether it's a required form, recommended, optional. And if you go into any of these forums at this point, we are using Frevo. You type in the information on this form and you submit it and then we have the record of it. So it's, we're collecting all the information just digitally. We do have an option for families that maybe can't access this to, we can print out the paper, paper forms and still do it that way. So Leslie McLean, Ruben's assistant has really been kind of heading and spearheading this initiative. She's been working with Adele, our data analyst and, you know, the secretaries, registrars, et cetera. Leslie's been really good about updating us statistically as to what's going on. And I'm just gonna pull up the most recent email just to kind of let people know where we're at. This is as a Friday, we're at the point where things are moving a little bit slower, so we're not updating every day. But in this email, as of three PM Friday, seventy point five five percent of anticipated returning and new students have been registered through the portal. So as of Friday, we already have seventy percent of our students' data in this web to school system. Typically, that process would involve printing out a bunch of forms. You give them to the child on the first day or during kindergarten registration or something like that, bring them home to the parent. You'd sign the forms, you'd bring them back. Then we'd have to have somebody take the forms, input all that information into the same system anyway. And then you'd have your official registration. I remember one of my, one of the years I was here, I went to take photos at one of the first days of school and I tried getting, making sure I had the no photo permission, you know, you don't wanna have anybody out there that doesn't want us to put their photo out there. And I ultimately couldn't post the photos because we didn't have the information. So I didn't wanna risk it and just say, let's put a bunch of photos up there and maybe have somebody that doesn't wanna be out there. We we're building toward a system where we'll have all this information prior to the start of the school year. Trying to see if there's any other more. So yeah, we have nine hundred thirty two students, five hundred sixty three guardians. Currently, the process is that we're reaching out to a primary guardian for households and setting them up to make sure that we at least have one point of contact for each learner. Part of phase two is gonna be reaching out to those second family members. So you know, you might reach out to option number one. Being, you know, the mother and you'd reach out to the father, make sure that they have their information confirmed, obviously in split family situations, things like that. We're working with those families to make sure that everybody's in there to make sure that both sides are getting communicated to. On this upcoming Friday, there's gonna be a big meeting with all the people that have been involved to discuss the current status, the pros, the cons, and what the next steps are in the next phases of this project, because ultimately we wanna have everybody enrolled. So we wanna add, like I said, we wanna add those secondary guardians because eventually we want everybody in that system. And then just, I guess, to take one step back, I forgot to mention, a big project over the summer was we previously had fa- family setup where it would be Mr. And Mrs. So and so. So each guardian, like each, I guess, guardian family unit was considered one registration. So over the summer, there was a lot of efforts taken to split those people up. So that everybody, we have all our families, our guardians and our parents in a silo and everybody's individuals, that those contacts and things like that can be updated. Then we have all of our students in a silo. Now we're working on how those play well together and how we can use them for communication. And then a third phase would be figuring out how we categorize staff and have that information collected. So I guess, is there any questions on that? Step or side? All right. So I'll move on to the next.
If I can make a statement, the introduction to a lot of these digital processes that Leslie's been spearheading. Around, they've all been around communication in some capacity. Some of it's just been internal communication. The blue, the old blue sheets, green sheets, all that kind of stuff. You know, our, our data storage, taking everything from paper and putting it into digital so that we don't have to have all these filing cabinets and all this kind of, as an ongoing project. But it's, it's certainly given us some new opportunities, kind of a different lens to look at solving problems. Like for instance, right now, we've just had our second week. Every Monday at eight thirty to nine thirty until we're done. We have a certain group of people working on onboarding and offboarding procedures. It's, it's actually a much bigger project than I had anticipated. But the importance of being able to envision and utilize some of our technology processes that we have now to, to streamline communication and make sure that things are accurate and that our practices are done in a timely fashion is really, is really key. So well, looking, lots of work that was done. I mean, it was a stressful summer, but we, we've accomplished some incredible things.
Well, and Leslie continues to work on, so this is a good example of kind of the work that's been done around forums. So these forums up here, these three are now Frevo forums and they have their own routing chains. Oh, it's not gonna let me log in or whatever. Some of these that you have to log in because you're obviously a part of the process. Other ones, you can just, I think the mileage, you might not have to. I know. So for all those staff ones, you have to log in in some way, shape or form. But when it comes to a lot of these forums, it, you fill it out and it channels through everybody remotely. So that you get a notification via email that it's your turn to do something. So for example, stipend reports. I'll come into the process at a certain point when it's been generated, it'll drop into my folder. I'll put the information into the stipend list that you guys receive as the board. I'll send it on to the next step and then it can be processed for business purposes. Looking at a personnel recommendation form, I'm one of the last people to get it because obviously you wanna make sure all the information's right. I get it. I print. I print off a version by, and I say print as in I turn it into a PDF. And then I give that document to you guys and that's how you make your decision on hiring. So it's just, it's creating the same process just digitally. And it's just led to a lot of efficiency and that we don't have to say, okay, who's this document with? What phase is it in? You know, it's already gone here. Does it now have to go there? And obviously we know the steps, but sometimes.
Ruben's desk still hasn't sat there for a long period of time.
So yeah, we did the website, we did web school registrations. Now we're gonna move on to the app. That's something that could happen any day now. We've sent the app off to the Apple Store and to the Google Store and we're just waiting for final approval that it's been put up. So it could literally happen in five seconds. It could take a couple more days. This information was sent out a couple of weeks ago. I was told it could take two to six weeks. Apple, it seems is usually a little bit more finicky than Google. So once this actually goes live, we will be in a place where we have an app. So what's up on the screen right now is just kind of the interface that I can use in the backend. So anybody who, you know, logs in for the first time is gonna see this welcome to the mobile app. And you know, you'll start your setup. Everybody's gonna have access to the school district because obviously it's important. But then you can select your schools. So if you're not, you know, if you only have kids in RMS and you don't care about what's going on at JGS and JRMS, you can just turn them off. And then you just don't have that information being clogged up. I'll put them all up just as an example. Then you move on, you've set up, I can start my app. So it's really basic and it's set up, you know, you get the school district logo, you get the school district colors. We're doing a three by three setup down on the bottom. We have the ability, you know, as you can see these buttons right here to change any of these. I can change what they say. I can change what the icons are. I can sit, I can change where they link to. We have the ability to add in multiple pages. So I could do, you know, five pages of, you know, little widgets and things. You know, if you ever wanna change your select the school, you have that in your settings. So like I said, this is kind of what it's gonna look like on a phone. Obviously, different phones are different sizes, so it might look a little different. It's gonna look a little different on an iPad. I can, you know, preview it here and change the screen around. But so news is gonna populate all of your news, hopefully. Yeah. So see, we're getting you know, CHS homecoming, early dismissal, so on and so forth. You're getting all that information there. So all your news will just funnel in there. You can go to the calendar. You have all your calendar inputs. It gives you a little code that says JRM for JRMSS, you know, JRC for the school district. So it breaks it down that way. Notifications is gonna be a big like change or ability for us. So what notifications mean is it means push notifications. So that's gonna be an additional way that we can reach people with important news. If we have a, you know, snow day, for example, if we have a evacuation, if we have something like that, anybody who has this app is gonna get a push notification to their phone. Obviously, you can set up your phone how you want and it won't actually, you know, beep or show anything to you if you don't want it to, but you can set it up where if Ruben sends out an important thing in the morning, you know, sends out a notification at six AM that there's a snow day, you need a ping on your phone, you're gonna get a little thing. Was that?
Five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty. So you'll get it there and then you'll come into the app and you'll see notifications. You'll see a little one next to it. You'll click in, you'll be able to see what it says. So obviously we'll be, you know, trying to roll that out as kind of a, hey, this is nice. If you want these push notifications, obviously it's all elective. You are not required to get it. It's not gonna be the only way that we communicate this information. It's just that additional tool in the two belt to be able to reach people how they wanna be reached. We have analytics on all of this, you know, to be able to see what buttons are being used, what buttons aren't being used. I put a school board button on there. If nobody's using it, we can drop it in favor of something else. You know, this Facebook and Instagram is gonna send you right to our pages. It'll link up to the apps if you have them. So there's just a lot of integration to be had there. So this is kind of just a basic setup right here. We'll see how it goes. If we wanna add buttons, change things after we roll out the app, we can. And again, Apple Store, Google Store. So as, as far as I'm concerned, you should be able to get it on any smartphone that you have. I don't think there's a limitation to, you know, how old or new your phone is. And then I ultimately have the ability to change all this stuff really quick and live. I can push republish. And once I push republish, it's gonna send it out to everybody. You don't actually need to go into the store and do like an update to make it live. It's just you have to. I think if I remember correctly, all you have to do is just close out of the app and go back in or even, no, actually what it is, is once you go into the app, it'll say that changes have been made and you just click, okay, it'll refresh. So it's not like if I make ten changes in one day, you're gonna have to go through some big lengthy like update on your phone. So that is. that is the app. And obviously I have talked about a second app that we would eventually be unrolling and we can integrate it into this and that we give it a button so you can move on to it. But that would be to serve as more of a communication tool similar to what I know, I believe RMS is using remind, or at least some teachers are using it there. It's just a two-way communication portal. A teacher can set up a two-way communication channel between themselves and their, you know, the parents of their kids. It can be used for sports athletics and it just, it gives us again, that additional option. And then if we roll it out rather than this school using remind and this one using this communication tool, we can just say this is the official communication tool of the district. If you would like to use it, use it. If you're using remind, please move over to this so that we just have the because you're going to be able to have all the, all the backend work and the backend benefits that we're having will translate to that because all of our all calls and all those things are on school messenger, communicate. The website program's called school messenger presence. And they do play well together. And that's part of why we moved to this website and app model is because all of that stuff just feeds together and plays really nice together. So I do have one more thing I just want to quickly go over, but does anybody have questions about the app?
No questions. Just think it's great.
Okay. So real quick, I just wanted to.
And this is probably one of the first things that the original communication committee, like within the first two to three days that we met years, like what, two, is it now three years ago?
Twenty eighteen, I believe, is when.
Yeah, twenty eighteen. Was like, why don't we have an app? I mean, it's amazing how long it takes to actually get from one point to another. You think you can go that fast, but it's, it's a it's, it's been a lot of focus and a lot of work. So nice job.
And again, it's, it's designed to be simple but informative. It's not flashy. You're not getting like, I could, I could have added the ability to put in like photo slides, decks and things like that. I wanted to go really bare bones, basic. You want information, here's how you get it. You know, again, like if we decided we want a different template down the road, we have the ability to make those changes. But for now, I really just wanted to prioritize finding information. So the last thing I just wanted to show real quick. Social media strategy kind of plays into a lot of the stuff when it comes to color coding, things like that. So one thing that I've kind of ramped up this year is try to make sure that we're again, working more with colors, but also working with just little notifications and things. So this is the email that Ruben just sent out that he referred to at six o'clock. Emails on there just has a little graphic. It's color coded to the district. You know that if you follow this page, those colors are important to everybody. Read it because it's important to everybody. You have your JGS weekly notes. We're letting you know that a new one was published today. It's JGS themed. Again, JRMSS, different color scheme. But again, this format and that this is what the weekly notes little tab looks like. So just trying to create things that are similar. School board meeting, add in a little bit more of that yellow just to signify a little bit of difference. So we're reminding everybody that there is a meeting where you can find the agendas. Everything's designed to try to route you back to the website so that you can A, be more familiar with it and B, just so that we can make sure that it's all there. You know, we have that math information night, the graphic that Ruben had. So just trying to create a lot of these graphics that are color coded, really quick hit information. Because it, by doing that, we can translate over to Instagram really easily. Facebook and Instagram are partnered together. So with me pushing out one of these, it immediately goes out to both sites at the same time. Obviously down, you know, as we're ramping up into school, I'd like to start adding more photos, informational pieces beyond just the informational pieces. You know, one of the things that I tried doing with retirements was just, you know, giving people their celebration. I am trying to work on getting a definitive list of our new staff members. Because last year I started doing that with new staff members, just kind of giving a quick little questionnaire. Here's a picture of this new person. Here's a few things about them. Here's where they're working, trying to humanize things a little bit more. So all of this is just kind of playing together, you know, the color coding, the branding, the efforts to just have information be accessible at multiple locations, but not to the point that it's like overkill. Another thing that we're gonna be working on, just to finish up. I am working with a group of students right now because we did say that student drive, student initiative is a really important part of communication. It's kind of that third goal that we added into this plan. The Oriole Outreach Squad is kind of a mentoring group at the high school. They actually reached out, a couple of members of that group reached out to Heather Lindstad, talked about like, hey, we want to try to better communicate to freshmen, younger, you know, folks at the school about certain initiatives and things that are going on. We'd like to start an Instagram page. So we're working through like the policies and the procedures and how we can make this work. But the idea would be to create a pilot program where it's a closed group run by students for students where students are creating content on flex period offerings and things like that. Just little things like, hey, this is a little bit about us as the mentors. With the goal of trying to see if we could make something like that work where it is kind of an entirely small student based group. So we're hoping for that to be live in the next couple of weeks. It will be a private group where you'll have to be let in just because we don't want to just have it open to everybody because the idea is to kind of keep it closed and piloted. But if it works, we can maybe start talking about what other ways can we involve students in general communication? I mean, there have been circumstances where videos and graphics have been given to me and hey, can you post this up? The interact group has done it a couple of times. A couple of other student-led groups have said, hey, we really want to get the word out about this. Here's a poster. Can you put it up? So more than happy to work with students on that. But that concludes all the information I wanted to talk about. Again, certainly happy to answer questions, talk in more detail about whatever people want, or we can finish up here and call it a night too. So whatever everybody feels.
Oh, it looks great. Really, really good. Really pleased. Are there any other questions or comments?
I, yeah, I just say it does look great. There's a lot to absorb and look forward to it and I hope we can ask questions as we need to.
Yeah. And certainly this, this doesn't just go for the board members. It goes for anybody attending the meeting. Feel free to spread the word. Again, if you're having an issue with the website, if you don't know where something is, if you're having a problem, if you have an idea, feel free to reach out. My information or at least my email is on the, you know, on every single homepage, just saying if you have questions or ideas, please reach out to me. Because while I have kind of created something new for people, like ultimately this website is going to work better if it serves the community. And if there are certain things that aren't working, you know, we can make adjustments to better, you know, suit needs.
Okay. Alrighty. But sorry, was there another question or comment?
I was just saying, great job, Nick.
Yeah. Thanks. Thanks, Charlie. Okay. Let's move on to the board committee updates. Facilities, did you have a meeting since our last?
Yeah, yes, we did meet this morning for a couple of hours. Covered a lot of ground. Ruben has already given us updates on a number of things. There's a lot of detail we could go into, but rather than do that, I would think that it would be most useful to say that there are some needs. When we look at the bathrooms and all four buildings in the district and when we look at the needs for heating, ventilation and air conditioning upgrades that we we, we have some opportunities to, to make movement on, but our timeframes are going to be short. We're going to have to be creative. We're going to have to answer some questions about the funding and I would say that's the big agenda for the next couple of months.
Right. Okay. Thanks. Any, any questions for John on facilities? Okay. Charlie, can you give a real quick update on finance?
Oh. We talked about funding different different ways of funding things for next year in terms of all the facilities work that needs to be done. And we talked about one of the things that we needed to do was the auditor's report. We had no real issues with the auditor's report. However, we did have a reminder that we needed to review the finance policies every, I believe it was five years. And so one of the things we need to do is either ask the policy committee to review those policies or the finance committee could review them because you're talking primarily about the financial policies. The finance committee could review them and send them to you if you want. So.
I think we also, we also looked at the calendar for a budget.
Yes.
Budget calendar. Yep.
We accepted the a draft calendar that Kerry put together.
Right. All right. Any questions for Charlie? Okay. How about we jump to policy? Policy, have you had a meeting or do you have a date?
We will be meeting. We pushed off our meeting until next week, which is not our regular schedule. So we'll be meeting next Thursday at five thirty.
All right. And maybe then you can talk about and let the finance folks know what you'd like around that.
Yeah.
Great. Um. How about education? We haven't had a meeting. I don't know if there's one on the calendar.
There's not one on the calendar yet, but I think that we'll be starting that up next month and then on a monthly basis. Currently going to be giving the opportunity hopefully to another administrator to be able to kind of get that going on a regular basis and planning with the school board as to what it wants to see every single month.
Great. Sounds good. And then also the goals committee. We were trying to get a date.
Yeah, the, the beginning or the second, second week of October, the early part Monday or Tuesday is what we were trying to do. There's a couple board members who are on that. Right now, there, there's some conflicting times between the two. So I gotta kind of rally, see, see what we can do to get both together.
We need to talk. Okay.
You need to talk. Yep.
All right. How about wellness? Has there been any?
The wellness committee had a brief meeting today primarily to review the plans for the walk to school day on October sixth. It looks like it's all set. Except we have to get apples, but anyway, it looks like it's going to be, it's well planned and it's going to be a great day. And we're talking about future events or other events that the wellness committee can sponsor.
Wonderful. Thanks. Any questions on wellness? Okay. And we just heard all about communication. So I think we're probably good on that one, huh?
Yeah, I mean, I hope to set up a meeting just to kind of debrief folks because I wasn't able to kind of work in a meeting before we went live with the website just due to timing and some of the other things that were going on. So hoping to at least present that and have more discussions about next steps.
Great. Thanks. Okay, so we're at public comments.
All right. So again, public comments, I'll put the the policy back up. If you would like to make a public comment, just use the hand raise feature at the bottom of the screen. We can acknowledge you. First name, last name, town of residence, before you make a comment though, please. All right, I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. Great. Board matters.
I have one. This is Lisa. Just a real quick, Nick, could I ask you to change my agreement on the consent agenda to abstention? I didn't look at the stipend list before and I usually do. So if you could make it look like I abstained on the vote for the accepting the consent agenda for today, please.
Charlie, legally, do we need to kind of redo that? Or is that cover us?
I think we, oh, sorry. Yes, you. Pull it out, go back and do the process of pulling that out and going through the motions.
I don't think, I don't think anybody's going to challenge it.
Okay. All right. I didn't know if we had to like rescind something and then redo. But okay. Also, I think an item on board matters is the the New Hampshire School Board Association does you know, they offer workshops and it used to be, used to go to them, but since COVID, they're like webinars and if you sign up for them, even if you do not attend, at that point, they will send you the presentation, the PowerPoint kind of presentation and what they've recorded. So Nick, I think you have been attending quite a few or at least signing up for quite a few so that you have access. And are you going to be putting those a cache somewhere?
I certainly can look back at the ones that I've attended and received information on. I know that you and I had a conversation about it recently and what I am going to do for the board members is I'm just going to sign up for all of them in the hopes that they just send me the information and then I can just forward it onto the board. So that regardless of whether or not you attended, you at least have access to the recording and the slideshow. I personally try to attend the ones that I think have relevance to my position or things that I may have an interest in. Like recently, there was one on public comments and things like that. There was one on a community engagement, I believe. I wasn't, I signed up and had something come up, so I wasn't able to attend, but I at least got the recording. So hopefully I'll be able to you know, review that. But yeah, I can look through my emails, send the ones I have. And then just as a practice moving forward, like there's one, I believe tomorrow on budgeting. I can send that out to the board and you guys can just look at it if you want.
Right. And that's how the conversation initially started was around budget season. And just to help people with the whole process, that there's are these workshops that might be worth, you know, kind of going through to be more familiar with the budget process. So, okay, great.
I guess just for sake of clarity, is there any board member that's not receiving emails from the New Hampshire School Board Association, just so I can make sure that you are getting those? Are we all getting them at this point? Yeah, there is one tomorrow. It's six thirty PM. And it is on school district budgeting. So you still have time to sign up for that one, should you want to have a fun Wednesday.
Marcia.
Yeah, John, go ahead.
Thank you for bringing that topic up. That was one thing we did discuss a little bit at our finance committee meeting and it's it's interesting with working with spreadsheets and finance can seem a little bit overwhelming if you haven't done it a lot, but the language isn't really all that difficult to understand if you put a little time into it. And you know, money is very important to all of us. Right? It's important to taxpayers and it's, it's just a good thing to try to you know, not be intimidated by the, the finance side of, or the budgeting side of this, this job because you know, our, our, our finance manager does all the heavy lifting and Ruben. So it's not like, you know, it's, it's that much really. And this workshop tomorrow, as Nick pointed out, which is on budgeting. You know, you can watch it. It's online or you can just sign up for it. And then as, as Marcia commented, they'll send you the, you know, a copy of the you know, the Zoom meeting, I think, as well as the documents. And I would say one more thing, and I know Charlie will thank you for this. If you really have any questions, Charlie would love to sit down. And, and I would say one more thing, and I know Charlie will thank you for this. If you really have any questions, Charlie would love to sit down. Boy, I know we would. How, how does it go? A million here, millionaire, pretty soon we're talking real money?
Oh, all right, thank you very much. Um, future items? Anyone, anything? Budget's coming, okay. Um, if there's nothing else, then I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Charlie. Someone want to second that?
A second, Lisa?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thanks, folks. We're adjourned.